...the regular meeting of the zoning commission for the town of Simsbury, Monday, June 17th. Tonight, we will appoint Ned to sit for Amy and Vaughn to sit for Will. All right? And that gives us a quorum. All right? We have quite a bit to go through tonight, so let's get started. I reviewed the minutes. I didn't have anything in particular, did you, Ed?
I have a comment, lines 31 through 33. That was the vote on the consent agenda. It has me making the motion and doing the seconding.
Oh, all right.
I don't know who did that, so we can straighten that out after.
Okay. New form of Roberts rules.
Right.
If you want to volunteer to make the motion, you can volunteer to second it.
Yeah.
Okay, your minutes based on that?
She'll go back and look. We'll give her the notes. So we'll move to adopt the minutes as amended to reflect the actual motions that were given. All right. We have several public hearings. You want to read the call?
Legal notice, Town of Simsbury Zoning Commission, regular meeting. The zoning commission of the town of Simsbury will hold a public hearing at a regular meeting to be held on Monday, June 17, 2013, at 7:00 p.m. In the main meeting room at the Simsbury Town Office is 933 Hop Meadow Street, Simsbury, Connecticut, on the following. One, Application 13-26 of Ensign Bickford Realty Owner for special exception pursuant to Article 10, Section D of the Simsbury zoning regulations for excavation and removal of materials on the property located at 437 Hop Meadow Street, MAP F14, Block 103, Lot 005-3, Zone I-2. Item number two, Application 13-31 of Mark Nolan, Agent for Town of Simsbury Owner, for special exception pursuant to Article 10, Section H of the Simsbury zoning regulations for a temporary liquor permit for a series of events on the property located at 73 Walcut Road, MAP 102, Block 439, Lot 002, Zone I-1. Item number three, Application 13-32 of David M. and Cheryl Cordani Owners for special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section C9 of the Simsbury zoning regulations for an accessory dwelling unit on the property located at 32 Lucy Way, MAP I-13, Block 103, Lot 018, Zone R-80. And item number four, Application 13-33 of Gifts of Love, Agent for the Town of Simsbury Owner, for special exception pursuant to Article 10, Section 8, H of the Simsbury zoning regulations for a temporary liquor permit for an event on the property located at 73 Walcut Road, MAP 102, Block 439, Lot 2, Zone I-1. At this hearing, interested persons may appear and be heard, and written communication will be received. Edward J. Pabbage, Secretary, dated this third day of June 2013, at Simsbury, Connecticut.
Thank you, Ed. We'll take these in the order, and we will run this meeting as it's outlined in the agenda, which means we'll go through all four presentations, and then we'll come back and consider them. So, out of fairness to everybody here.
Gus Keswinski from Ensign, Victor Realty. We have Bob Stevens from Stevens Landscape Architect, and Amy DeFalleys, the President. We're here to talk about the entrance to the Powder Forest here. Just to give you a quick overview, here's Hop Meadow Street, here's Powder Forest Drive. This is the site. It's a 39-acre site, large site, lot of wetlands. Here's a traffic light right here. There's a big ridge right in the middle. And we're trying to prepare this site for development, and so we have to go in, clear it, regrade it, and basically make it flat at 2% grade for a parking lot. And so we've got to clear it. It's approximately 94,000 yards of material to remove from there. Just to give you an idea, if you did it over two years, if you did it every day, it'd be 1.3 trucks per hour, 17 yards a truck. So even if you only did it every other day, it's still only three trucks per hour, which is like one truck every 20 minutes. So it's... When you look at the scheme of things, it's about six and a half acres, but it's 94,000 yards. And Bob will talk about some of the technical details.
Should I stand here?
That's fine. Just so you're comfortable.
For the record, Roger Stevens, Ensign Architect, I trust that you have these in your holders?
We got them emailed to us. Yeah, we'll share. Do you have one, Dan? Or do you have a couple?
Just reduced copies of these. They're a lot easier to see. All of these are in colors. As Gus says, the site is on the corner of Hop Meadow Street and Powder Forest Drive. Gus meant to say 29.8 acres, not 39.8 acres. The area shown in blue is wetland. The area shown in yellow is upland soils. These wetlands have been mapped this year. Wetland was mapped back in the 1980s, and it was subject to remapping of the town's map. Just two weeks ago, this area, this line of the wetland southern boundary was subject to an application before the Wetlands Commission to establish that as a field map to survey the wetland line. The remaining line here is from the town's wetland map, just superimposed, since we're not going to work in that area. It seems to be a happy ground with field map data. The soils here are basically stratified sand and gravels, very similar to the material that was, like we wear, Site 4 on Powder Forest, where the material was chipped from the storm a couple of years ago. That site, similar in soils and material. The existing conditions on the site are of a larger scale. The site rises up from Powder Forest Drive, it drops off to the wetland to the north, it drops off to the small wetland to the south. There's the open green area that you're all familiar with, the nice lawn area out front with the crabapple trees along the front. That lawn area basically stays. When I get to the planting plan, I'll show you. We're cutting part of it off here. It basically stays. And there's some nice spruce trees that we planted a number of years ago. We only lose one of those trees as part of this. We're going to actually preserve those trees. Very nice backdrop for this lawn area. The topography, as I said, it rises up. It's about 40 feet above Powder Forest Drive at that most due points. The grading plan, we're taking the grades down to just above Powder Forest Drive, opposite Powder Forest Drive, so it's just slightly above Powder Forest Drive. And we're creating a platform that's at 2% grade. For reference, Site 4, you drive by and look into that site, that was graded at 5%. This is going to be a little flatter, it's at 2%. There will be an anti-tracking pad constructed 400 feet in from Hop Meadow Street with a paved apron, and then a washed stone anti-tracking pad that's about 60 feet long. There will be detention pond built in this area. Temporary for this construction, and possibly left for future construction, so it doesn't have to be duplicated in the future, but ultimately removed in the end when the site is developed. This detention pond was sized for 10-year, 25-year, and 100-year storms, so we're not over the top. And we contain the water and let it out at a controlled rate with velocities that will not create any erosion. We're developing a 25-foot-long rubble spreader in an area where there's established grasses. It's going to be built such a way as the detail showing it that it doesn't disturb the grass. So as soon as the thing is built, it will be already stabilized to be able to receive the reduced runoff. There was a drainage study and report that was submitted to Rick Suwisty, the town engineer. He reviewed that report along with a set of plans and incurred with the methodologies of the study and conclusions of the report. And I believe that you have probably got in your files a letter for that request. This is the erosion control plan, and we comply with the town's standards for erosion settlement control, as well as the state standard guidelines for erosion settlement control. There's a temporary diversion swale that's going to be built on the north side, so the drains can never get past that swale. And then it's silt fence on the outside of that swale. The entire downhill side on the north and on the south is completely silt fence. There will be silt fence check dams along the way to reduce the velocities and minimize the transportation of silt. There's a, in set plans, there's an erosion control detail plan that basically says everything that I've just said and a lot more. And also has a construction sequencing to be done in such a way that minimizes erosion. It's contemplated that the work will be done in two phases to reduce the impact. Phase one is this area here. It's not quite half the volume of total, but it's about half of the area. And there's additional silt fence that goes in just particularly to phase one. And this just shows the temporary grade between phase one and phase two. The phase two plan just shows the phase two area conforming to the original grading plan, the grades that will be established at the end of the removal. Both the phase one plan and the phase two plan is a construction sequence, of what has to be done first, second, third, in order to minimize the erosion. And then at the end of the project, and areas will be stabilized as they move along. It won't be held until the end, and then it will stabilize. As areas get graded to the finished grade, the topsoil will be seeded and stabilized. In the end, this area here will still remain lawn. Some of it will have been disturbed and will be established. Maintain lawn along the edge and that larger green area. The rest of the area will be seeded with a mix of warm-season grasses and wildflowers to create a meadow that, for the duration that the site is sitting there, waiting for the development to occur, it can have some value to the songbirds, which is important. And we're told that, I could hardly understand this, but Simsbury is low on the amount of meadows. And we're encouraged to create meadow grasses. Of course, open the door. Planting, there will be shrub planting. And initially, we were going to put some shrub plants in the areas that were closest to the wetland, the plants that were compatible to the wetland environment and helped to just protect those areas. But we went through the wetlands approval. It was discussed by an environmental consultant that there was little value of putting any planting on the south side. There was great value of putting it on the north side, because sunlight is going to be going into the wetland where it wouldn't have before. So he suggested that we move these plants to the north side. The Conservation Commission incurred with that, so that's our attempt. You wanted to answer any questions or whatever?
I just have a couple of other things. When you look at the site, across the street to the southeast, commercial office buildings, we own the site to the west. To the north is primarily dino land. And then just directly north of it is the large wetlands. So we're a meter or 400 feet from any residential. There are a couple houses across the street, but they're technically on commercial property. We have quick access on Powder Forest Drive out to a light onto Route 10, so you're not driving. None of the trucks will be going through neighborhoods and things, and it'll limit the disturbance to, you know, a commercial area. So we think that, you know, we're not going to disturb the neighbors and/or the traffic patterns in any of the neighborhoods.
I understand what's been said, and I'm sure that'll be a quality job. But what I think we ought to just focus on is really the quantity of material going off-site, which is about, I did a quick, you gave a statistic, but I did a quick number two that says about 5,000 truckloads. And I think we should at least understand where the material's going and what your path is through town to move 5,000 trucks.
We don't know. What our plan would be, once we get the approval, we would go out to people like Tim's Croft, or there's a couple other people out there who would manage to bid for us. They would actually come in.
So you didn't do your deal yet with?
Right. We haven't done a deal with anybody. And then pretty much, they would get it open, and then when they have a requirement to deliver material, that's when they operate the gap. That's about 17 yards a truckload.
Yeah, well, I said 10,000. 100,000 yards, 20 yards a truck. Take any easy number.
Is there a stream that comes across the street?
Yeah, there's Second Brook.
Second Brook, which comes through the dino property. It comes, puts under, and into Hazel, the back of Hazel Meadow. How close is your, actually, maybe you're going to get to where the, to that block? This is 100 scale, so we're about 500 feet away from it? From the brook? From the brook. How about from the wetland area? Are we going right up to the wetland area? No, I think the closest place is indicated here, it's 30 feet plus minus.
Setback from the actual line of the wetland.
Right. And 28 feet from this one here. But all this is going to catch this line. We're staying 100 feet from the property line, because the regulations call for not excavating below the grade within 100 feet.
And then what ultimately gets built on this pad? Curious. Is it an office building or?
Yeah, some, yeah, some sort of commercial thing. That's why we graded it 2%. And we just, we figured typically, well, what we've seen on the other side is people, when they come and look at it, they go, oh, this is wonderful. You can visualize it, because there's no trees. It's graded, and they go, yeah, building here, parking here, yeah, it's ready to go. But the problem with trying to market this site today is when they look at it, it's very different, difficult to visualize. And then when it takes, you know, two-plus years to get rid of the material, they're kind of, that, it just doesn't meet anybody's timeframe. So the intent really is to get the site ready for development.
So you would take the full two years to make?
Yeah, I mean, you have to look at the economy. If the economy was maybe moving a little faster, it might get done a little quicker, but I don't, I don't see it happening a whole lot quicker unless the economy miraculously moves forward quickly.
They dug a pretty big hole down in Farmington for the Jackson Lab building, and there were trucks everywhere, just to anecdote. And so it was a big issue. And they were literally everywhere, coming and going.
So, yeah, to that point?
Two years of that.
Huh?
Two straight years of that.
Well, I don't think you're talking about the concentration and the number of trucks. This was all going to be done in a matter of months, but
Right.
Probably the same amount or more.
But spread out over several years. What we saw in the last site, where we actually took off
120.
120. And that took three years or so, and we never really had any complaints. It's primarily very sharp sand. So one of the nice things is you can dig in the winter, because it doesn't hold the water, so it doesn't really freeze.
All right. Any other questions from the commission, Ned?
On the other side of Powder Forest Drive, you go up a grade to build the building. Why are you going to grade on this side and not doing the same type of elevation on the other side?
We are up from the road.
I thought you were going to be leveled with the road.
The backside, right.
Slightly above.
Yeah. Powder Forest Drive, where we enter there, we're more, we start off at a minimum 10 feet above Route 10. When you drive in Powder Forest Drive, it rises up pretty quickly, and we're up above that.
We're actually 8 feet up at this point, 6 feet up at this point. This entrance would be, the area where the Vida Route entrance is?
Almost, almost.
From it?
Yeah, just a little closer to Route 10 and the Vida Route entrance.
And yet, we're up to the Vida Route site. There's probably a 10-foot elevation off the road to where the pad is? It'll be here, too. It depends on how you're looking into the site. If you're looking down this way, it's going downhill. If you're looking this way, it's going uphill. I misunderstood. I thought what you were saying is you were going to bring it down level with the street. Slightly, slightly above. I said slightly.
Yeah, but it depends on what part of the street you're looking. It depends on what part of the street you're looking.
Right, because the street's pitch, right?
Yeah. All right. Are there any other questions that commissioners have for the?
Question is, is there any concern about the impact of, suppose they've got some deal, you guys get it done in 90 days, we'll do the deal. What happens then?
Well, that would, let's have that discussion when we consider, but you're asking them a question.
Yeah. What control do we have over night and day for 90 days? I think that would make people upset. And is that something we have jurisdiction over?
Well, there are some zoning questions we have to discuss when we discuss this. These are, this is the open hearing, in which we can ask questions about, of them, of the project.
Okay. The other, the part that's already been leveled back there, where they put the trees?
Yeah.
Is this going to be approximately level with that, or is this going to be at a lower level when it's finished? And is that your property?
Yes, that's all I believe, yeah. It's
The middle of that side is elevation 240. The middle of this side is elevation 202. So Powder Forest Drive goes pretty steep.
And there's a wetland between the two.
Oh, there is?
Yes. See that little blue strip there?
Yeah.
So that, the area just to the left of the little blue, is the place that you leveled earlier?
That area there.
That's it?
Yep.
All right.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience that has, would like to say anything about this project? Questions for, please. Say your name and your address.
Ken Williams, homeowner at One Candlewood Court, which is right on the other side of the wetlands from where this project occurred. During the day, when will these trucks be moving?
Generally speaking, you know?
Are you allowed, are you allowed to move or excavate 24 hours a day?
No.
Seven days a day?
Well, I'm sure the commission will put some sort of guidelines on us, but typically the contractors work just from 7:00 to 5:00. I mean, nobody, I haven't seen where anybody runs 24 hours a day. There's really no
But if you, to the gentleman's question, if you have the deal of a lifetime, 90 days, you've got to get that prepared, that's a lot of material to move, so.
Technically, that's why we're here today, because we know it's going to take us a couple of years. If, if we had a deal and we had to do something quickly, and we had to come in front of the commission and say, jeez, we've got to get rid of this material in, you know, in a couple of months, then there would be a lot of trucks. So we're trying to do it now over time.
Okay. When you exit the property, are you going left or right?
Depends where the materials go.
Okay. So you can't?
Yeah, right. It just depends where it's going.
Where will the water from, ultimately, where will the runoff from? I mean, you're talking about eventually down the road, when you've got parking lots and acres of
The way the
This may be not a question pertinent to
Well, no. The way the drainage works now, they have this low-impact drainage, where what they're trying to do now is instead of having catch bases at the edge of the parking lots to get the water to the wetlands, what they're doing now is they're infiltrating it under, under the soil. So the intent is whatever water's hitting the soil goes into the ground through some sort of infiltrators. And if you have a very intense rain over a short period of time, you can, you can overwhelm your drainage systems, and then it'll top out and run over into the wetlands. But in the past, you used to just get it quickly to the wetlands and get it down to the Farmington River. Now it's to try to take all the rain, whatever hits it, and drop it into the ground.
From your understanding of Second Brook, will it be able to accommodate any great increase in volume of?
The intent of the LID regulations is not to overwhelm any of the brook, and you have to even look at, you know, like, for instance, parking areas, the water coming off in the middle of the summer is too hot. And if it, if it comes off too hot, it goes into the brook and it kills some of the fauna and the flora. So you're really trying to stop all that, put it underground so it gets cool and dry and goes, and saturates the ground as opposed to running into the brook. You're trying not to add any more rain into the brook than is there now today. Trying to keep everything the same.
Is there any possibility of exit from this project
Yeah.
that would cause traffic down the little Candlewood Court? I'm trying to visualize this.
There's a huge wetlands between our site and yours, in your neighborhood. There's a huge wetlands that
Yes, but at the very end
Yeah.
of, of the lane.
Yeah.
The, the property looks like it is, there's potential for putting a relatively small road through and possibly into this property. Is that realistic or?
I'll address that. Yeah, the Old Court is right here.
Yes, sir.
The cul-de-sac is at this point.
Perfect.
The wet, the wetlands in this area comes within 75 feet of the end of the property here, opposite the cul-de-sac. There's no, there's no room for any development in there. And you could not cross the wetland to come up there. That just wouldn't, wouldn't be allowed under the wetland regulations.
The yellow in your map is the
It's non-wetland.
Is non-wetland.
Non-wetland.
Can you point?
The blue is
Pardon, sir, but can you point that, the end of Candlewood Court?
It's right here.
But, so it's undeveloped prop, it, it ends at developed property. Is that correct? When I say the yellow?
The, the yellow is, is upland soil, but it would not be developed as part of this. It has no practical value for this, other than ratio land.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
The water from this hill, from the lake, now goes into Second Brook? It runs down the hill to Second Brook? Or it doesn't go into the brown here? It goes up to Second Brook?
Anyone else from the audience wish to speak? All right. We will, let's move on to our second public hearing. We will leave all, since we opened these all at once, Ed, I think we'll leave them all open, and we'll deal with each at the end of the public hearing. That's all right. All right? All right. So second is Application number 1331 of Mark Nolan for special exception, the town of Simsbury, for a temporary liquor permit for a series of events at 73 Walcut Road.
Good evening. My name is Laura Young, and I actually live in Avon, but I'm here tonight on behalf of the community farm of Simsbury, on Mark's behalf, because he's actually a family member with his family. And thank you very much for bringing together the projector. I do have a very brief presentation, just to give you an idea of what a farm-to-table dinner looks like. This summer, we have two farm-to-table events, which will both support the financial needs of the farm. Specifically, right now, we're trying to fund 40% of a tractor. We received a grant from the Department of Agriculture for 60% of the cost of the tractor, and so this will help support our needs, hopefully with the money that we raise. And I don't know how many of you have been to the farm. I'm sure many of you know where we are, but our mission is that we are a collaborative organization that promotes education and local agriculture while practicing sound environmental stewardship, preserving the town farm, and benefiting those in need. This is our high tunnel across the street, where much of the growing goes on during the winter, and the nearby fields, where we grow and produce food for food security programs and families in need in the area. Here is a Here is a picture of the farm, and if you look directly in the back, you will see the community classroom with the doors wide open. That is the general area where we set up the bar area. You'll see an umbrella there in between the white farmhouse and the barn. So, when people enter, that is where they will be entering the event. Our tent and tables and the bar area overlook our teaching garden, and by a teaching garden, I mean exactly that, that when kids come to visit for field trips, Maggie, our master gardener there on the right, works with kids to teach them all about healthy lifestyles and nutrition, and shows them exactly where their food comes from. This is the restroom facility, located right at the edge of the space where I first showed you in front of that community education classroom. So, people enter the farm-to-table space in between the barn on your left and the community education building in the middle there, and they come through and they have to sign in. That's the bar set up there to the right. And I've pulled together some pictures for you from three of our events last summer. We were very fortunate to have the Iron Frog Tavern and Metro Beast and Harvest Cafe put together fabulous meals for our farm-to-table events. Water is always served at every table. This was a dish prepared by Chris Pressberry last summer. The folks who come to the event are typically people from the area, although we do get people from further away. Mostly young adults working in the area, and you can see the kinds of folks who come. We don't get any college kids or, you know, people who are not there who would be of age. This is my second year at the farm, working on these events, but we also have several staff people who've been doing this for several years prior. Chris Pressberry is featured here, you can see, from last summer. He helped out putting together one of the dinners. And this year, we are also very fortunate that Chris Eddy from Windian, which is a Relais Chateau five-star resort in Litchfield Hills, that also believes in supporting local agriculture, is going to come and prepare a meal for us. And this is what it looks like once the sun has gone down. Any questions?
What's, what's typical attendance?
Well, they actually, last year got so popular that we ended up having tables, you can see, slightly outside the tent area, so we have decided this year to set a limit of 60 ticket sales, just because it's, it's harder to serve more people.
Sure.
It's hard to say no when people want to come to these events, but we feel that we are best going to be able to serve the maximum 60 of these events this year.
And your dates for these two events are set with rain dates?
We do have rain dates, although we're not very, very lucky, so please, the weather gods, we hope they're going to be good to us, but the first date will be July 31st with a rain date of August 1st. That's for the Metro Beast Dinner with Chris Pressberry. And then on September 4th, with a rain date of September 5th, we have Chris Eddy coming from Windian to prepare a farm-to-table dinner, of course. And there will be three staff members, all trained as tips certified servers, and several of us have also worked in serving this street before.
Serving beer and wine or?
Correct.
That's it? No hard liquor?
No hard liquor.
Any other questions from the commission? Anyone from the audience have any questions or comments? Thank you very much. Our third application is, application number 1332 of David M. and Cheryl Cordani, owners for a special exception pursuant to Article 7 for a dwelling unit on the property located at 32 Lucy Way. Is there anyone here from that group? They had asked that this be opened and continued until next week, and the commission is fine, or till the next meeting, and the commission's fine with that. Did anyone come to speak on that subject tonight? Good. All right, so we'll, so we will take that up. It will have, for statutory reasons, been open tonight, but continued until next week, two weeks, July 1st. So, that brings us to item number four, application number 13-33, Gifts of Love, for a special exception pursuant to Article 10 for a temporary liquor permit for an event on the property to be held, interestingly enough, at 73 Walcott Road, Community Farm.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Deb from Gifts of Love.
Deb, last name?
And, uh, Gally.
And are you a resident of Simsbury?
I am a resident of Avon.
Okay.
And I just actually started with Gifts of Love. I've been employed there for a couple of weeks now, and I'll be working on their events and marketing for them, so really looking forward to that. And we are looking for a permit to hold one of our major fundraising events of the year. We have two every year. This one is called Ready, Set, Cook, and we would like to hold it this year at the Community Farm of Simsbury, which you just got a beautiful presentation on, so that makes my job all that easier. This event will be held on August 9th, and it is, as I said, it's one of our major fundraisers, and we will have an assortment of celebrity chefs and, it's like a combination of celebrity teams that will be cooking, like a cooking contest. So, that's basically the event. We expect, we've had it about 150 people each year, and we've been working very closely with the farm to determine the best way to handle parking and the details that go along with that amount of traffic.
Where did you hold this event last year?
It was held at the Bell Terrace.
Okay. So, so this is orders of magnitude bigger than the dinners that you've done?
It does.
Have you ever held a dinner this large at the farm before?
We have not held a dinner at the farm. We have held the Autumn Evening on the Farm event, which draws upwards of 500 people. Different event.
This is, I'm sorry, go ahead. It's actually not a dinner. This is more of a heavy hors d'oeuvres, stationed appetizers. We won't be having sit-downs. It's more of an entertainment-type event that you can mingle and, you know, taste some of the foods and things like that.
So, does everyone arrive and leave approximately the same time, and thinking traffic mostly, traffic and parking mostly?
It goes from, I believe the hours are 6:30 to 9:00. I can double-check on that for you, but it is, it will be set up like that. We are, have, either a culinary school, group, Boy Scouts, what have you, but we will have people whose jobs that night will be specifically for parking. We will be renting lighting for the pasture area where the parking will be held, so we're going to have it well-lit, and I can provide you with, you know, finalized rental lighting and things like that if you need that.
Is it across the street from pasture or?
No, it's on the same side.
And will you use the Simsbury Police for traffic control? Yes, no?
I would assume that we would have to. I haven't gone to that place yet, but.
It's a po-
Whatever we need to do.
Possible.
Obviously, we would need to be in communication with them.
Right. Right.
So.
All right, any other questions? What will you be serving?
It will be a regular bar. It will be a cash bar. So, it's your basic bar.
Mixed drinks. Full liquor.
And I have on our application the liquor license for the company that will be handling that and all that.
You've hired a?
We do, yep. We have, we've hired a-
It's not volunteers?
No. This is trained, you know, and it's a $50 charge to come to this event, so we don't expect that the clientele that comes to this event are, you know?
The application-
Coming unless they really, you know, want to be there to.
Your application says beer and wine.
It does?
Yes, it does.
Oh, then maybe, I'm sorry. New girl.
You might want to double-check that.
I will. I do see that here, too.
All right.
And I will double-check.
Yeah. What's that?
No more tease. I can clarify that and get back to you first thing tomorrow.
All right. All right, any other questions? Any comments from the audience?
Do I leave this application with you tonight?
I'm going to tell everybody what's going to happen tonight, so. We're, we're flying without a net here tonight, so.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
So, we do not have staff representation tonight, which is why it's running so seamlessly for us. But I think what we would like to do is, so let's go through each of these applications and tell you sort of where we are. The excavation, the commission does not yet have the benefit of the staff's report of this. I'm glad we could have the hearing tonight. Suggests that we leave it open until July 1st, let the staff do their work, and maybe we can visit the site or whatever, but be in a position to try to wrap this up for you on July 1st. All right? All right? With the, let's see, so the second would be to look at the community farms, repeat of last two years, and so I would suggest, I would be looking for a motion to close the public hearing on that topic.
So moved.
Seconded. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so that public hearing is closed, and now we can, we can act on that topic. We've already addressed the issue of the Cordani property, so that will be left open. And I would suggest to you that, so that brings us back to the Gifts of Love, which, if you really want a liquor permit for something other than what you applied for, then we can leave the public hearing open until July 1st, since you have a little bit of time Otherwise, we could close the hearing and act on the beer and wine permit, but.
Yeah, I think that's what we should do. My apologies, and I do see that here, too. It's clearly stated on the application. I didn't fill this application out, so I, I would say so. I just actually-
All right, so if it's not this, so you'll have to change the application, come back either way. So, we can close the hearing on this topic, which I suggest we do, and we can act on the application in front of us. If it turns out this isn't what you want, then you'll have to come back on.
Okay, yes, please. Let's just move forward as it is. Thank you.
A second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so now we'll consider these two topics for which the public has had a chance to hear and make comment, and so the zoning commission can act. Is there any discussion relative to the Community Farm 2 farm-to-table dinners beyond what we've already asked?
Basically, just to raise money for a tractor.
And full behind implements, last year, you know, each year, we have different means on the farm. I operate by raising funds through individuals and grants and other fundraising means, such as the farm-to-table dinners. And at the moment, our number-one priority is the new tractor, which the selectman is also working on with us to help perhaps procure funds through whatever means she might be able to. But right now, that's what we really need, because our previous executive director, Tim Goodwin, who I'm sure many of you remember, left with his tractor. So, when he left, we have been in a position of basically leasing one on a monthly basis. So, we just got a $49,999 grant from the Department of Agriculture, and that will help us with the tractor and the pull behind implements that we need, but we still have to come up with the other 40%.
Okay. So, this is, I'm looking for a motion to-
I would move approval.
And a second? Second by now. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approved. All right? And relative to Gifts of Love, their special event? So moved, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, those, those events, all three events now are approved? All right?
Thank you.
I would say with relative, now it's approved, I'm going to, because I'm going to bed for them, that you will need to work with the staff on items related to the liquor permit, traffic control, and all of those things. So, we, the zoning commission has, has approved in concept what you've applied for, but there will be other items and things that you need to do with town staff, both of you actually, to be sure that you comply.
You need a public attorney for that.
Right. And so, those, those things will dictate crowd control, lighting, safety, whether or not the police are involved.
Okay.
All right?
Very good.
And I'll find out tomorrow that we should have done something else, but we're fine. This is good. All right? I think we did good. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so we're now moving on to one other application, which is application 1324 of Anthony Frutal?
Frutal.
Frutal?
Frutal.
Sorry. My apologies. Of IUB Engineering for Franchise Realty Interstate Corporation owner for a site plan amendment of property located at 22 Albany Turnpike, West Simsbury.
Do I need to leave the application with you at all? It's notarized and has?
The original?
You already turned it up. Has it been signed by the selectman and signed by?
Um, it's been signed by?
Do you have the original signature?
Yep, I have original on here.
Well, I'd say what?
Yeah, this.
They got to come back to this public hearing.
Just bring it with you when you come back for the other permit.
Okay.
Because if you give it to one of us, God knows where it'll-
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You know, I may have the original.
Huh?
I may have the original.
Well, there's another one that Mary signed on.
That's the application for the owner.
Right. Understand. Sorry. Back to McDonald's.
My name is Tommy Frutal. I'm with IUB Engineering out of Tucker, Rhode Island. I do some work for McDonald's. From McDonald's, Ron McFarlane, she's a regional construction manager from corporate office. Jim McGarry is the owner-operator of the site, which is along Albany Turnpike, Bushy Hill Road, right here, down very bottom corner of your town, I guess. But McDonald's is proposing a major remodel project. It's a program that they've been implementing in a bunch of their stores in this area. And just wanted to talk a little bit about what they're, what they're proposing here. It's about a two-and-a-half-acre site. The building is about 5,000 square feet. Actually, it's a little bit bigger than that. They currently have 117 seats inside. There's an outdoor patio area right here. 85 parking spaces on the site with five handicaps. There's a couple here, and right currently, there's a couple here and a couple over here. The drive-thru wraps around this end of the building. It is a tandem drive-thru, which means the order points are like back-to-back. You get to one, you know, if it runs smooth, you know, you pull up, but if somebody stops, you can hold people up. As part of the remodel project, what they're proposing is, and this is the crux of it, is to put side-by-side drive-thru in. This creates two order points for the drive-thru, which is the choke point of a drive-thru. Sometimes this line ends up getting back along the building here. They want to get these folks to move through quicker. Just, it's more efficient for McDonald's and for Jim's people that are working there. If, if, Ron likes to use the example of mom in the soccer team gets to the order point and takes five minutes, or all the folks coming in to get their coffee can keep moving around the other, you know, the other drive-thru. What we'll do as part of this also is we'll maximize the, the distance from the order point to the window. McDonald's has done lots of studies of what that distance is to be most efficient as far as keeping those people moving, making sure that they get there in a timely manner, but the food isn't sitting, getting, am I stealing your thunder here, Ron?
No, you're good.
You know, so, hey, they want to keep people happy. You know how it is when you get there and fries are cold, so we don't want, we don't want that to happen. Also, as part of the, as part of the site revisions, all the handicap spaces will be moved to this area right here. That's as close as we can get them to the building. There will be some paving work done here to bring those all into ADA compliance, just make it just easy for those folks to get into the building. The areas in the light gray around the building, that would be this area here and this area here, and this area right here, that, that's all, no, I apologize. This area here and this area here. That sidewalk that will also be replaced in the interest of making it ADA compliant, just, that's a McDonald's standard that, that the folks from here and here can get into the two entrances, one here- the two entrances, one here, best to go here, in an ADA-compliant manner.
Can I ask you a question about the?
Absolutely.
Handicap spots? Is there any rules around size of building, size of parking lot, number of spots versus how many handicaps? It seems kind of light for the size there.
Yes, yes, there is. Your ordinance requires, actually, your ordinance requires the building to have 37 parking spaces. There's currently 85 spaces on the site. We're proposing 82. We'll be reducing it by three. Those are spaces that will be lost on this corner here. Out of those 85, it's required to have four handicap parking spaces, so that we do meet the state and local requirement for number.
Is that based on seats or square footage?
Actually, it's based on the number of, are you saying the amount of parking?
No, the ADA spots. It's usually worked out on either number of seats or the square footage of the building, depending on the municipality.
Okay. Well, actually, the ADA regulations are usually a percentage of the total number of parking spaces required, which are a function of the number of seats or the size of the building.
Right.
In your case, it's the size of the building. So the size of the building determines the number of parking spaces, and in a certain percentage of that, there's a table, very, very fine table, the state building code. And more than 50%, if you happen to need it, you can just go to the drive-thru and get out of the car either. It's not like a typical, you know, CBS or something like that where everybody has to get out of their car. Probably half the people don't have to get out of their car.
Yeah, I think the average McDonald's is 70% drive-thru.
The site signage will remain the same, you know, entrance and exit signs. There's a clock sign right here that will, that will all remain the same. For post-revisions to the building, the elevations are going to change a little bit. Also, part of the upgrade, the biggest change that you'll notice is the standard, what we're all used to, the double-man curved roof for McDonald's, that's going away. This will just be a straight wall with a facade at the top. There will be a roof cap element on an arcade on the drive-thru side of the building. It will be, there'll be hardy plank siding on the entire building, but given the character of that building and where it's at, and I knew there was a big discussion over this when it was originally installed, the geboings of the building, the playplace, the brick will remain. You can see where their, the signage is proposed. These signs are essentially will be replacing in kind what's there right now. It's the word mark is the exact same thing. And so interior work is actually kind of minimal. A couple of the restrooms have some walls that have to be moved to bring them into ADA compliance. The existing drive-thru window is actually back here. It's getting moved to here as part of, when I talked about maximizing that distance between the order point and the window. But that area actually currently, at some point, was designed at least to be a drive-thru window, so it's kind of minimal work to swap those out. There may be some decor work done, that's sort of yet to be determined, but the number of seats will be the same. Essentially, it'll be the same. So that's the extent of the work. We did go to the design review board last week, gave.
Loved it.
How'd that go?
Apparently, they loved it. So they got the same spiel you're getting right here, and they were fine with it, so we just, this is just a site modification to an existing site.
All right, so just go back to the double drive-thru and, let's just be comfortable that the pinch points there and the traffic that goes by on its way out, you still have to still go all the way around the building again after your drive-through to get out.
Circulation on the site is exactly the same as it was previously. We did, we did put this little concrete island in here to discourage, we don't want folks jumping into line here. As you may know, you currently do have to circumnavigate the building to get to the drive-thru, and then if you want to turn left.
And to get out.
And to get out, yes. So that.
If you want to go out that exit, there are others. You can come out. Yeah.
We did, we did do a turning template for fire trucks on the site with the stacking, assuming stacking, which we're looking to eliminate, but if it were to get all backed up, truck can still get the whole way around with the drive-thru lane completely full.
But if you're, if you're on your way out to the traffic light on the left, you now, that, yeah, so you have to turn, turn, is that pretty much the same?
This will all be exactly the same up here.
It seems kind of tight the way it is there right now.
The curve's coming back a little bit of the driveway. That's right, isn't it? The corner of the driveway, isn't that curve coming back a little bit?
This curve here, yes. This curve is actually getting pulled down a little bit.
Just a bit of the leaf, yeah.
Yeah, this is, this actually, this turn in here is a little bit tighter right now. We're pulling that curb back a little bit to get folks through there. That's 418-foot width in there. Regular vehicles and even trucks with trailers.
So with two lanes of cars, a fire truck can still get around? That's deceiving.
Because we need our delivery truck to get around, too.
Sure, yeah, sure. If there's, if there's traffic in here, or, I'm sorry, if there's cars all along here, both of these lanes, and the whole way back alongside the building here, I can still bring a fire truck in here and go the whole way around and not flip anybody.
I have a question with regard to the eastern end of the building. When cars come in off Route 44, I'm curious, yeah, right there, have there ever been any accidents there with parking cars?
On a property.
Yeah, backing out?
Yeah.
Because you're back into.
Maybe a little minor or whatever. No.
Well, most people are turning right. Well, some people are going around the building.
Well, if you, but if you're coming in, you come in, you've got to go around the back of the building, right? So you go by those spots, you go by those spots on your right?
Yes.
All right.
It really hasn't been.
Do these, do these spaces get used soon?
Yes.
Okay.
Meaning, the closest spaces get used are the ones that are closer to the building.
Yeah. I see people in here all the time, correct? Obviously.
Then the peak outwards, the back, the back lot gets used a lot more.
Are you going to get rid of their truck?
No. Like the block?
I'm surprised what's the last thing.
Oh.
I heard that.
Has it been any?
I'm not going to do the red, yellow, and white upside.
No, the whole building will be in the taupe family. You can see the colors on that.
Okay, all right.
It's the new sort of arcade look for our buildings. I'm sure we fought hard for that outside back in the day, and now we hate it.
Yeah, this will be very close to what the building looks like. I'm not promising the colors only because that's just a matter of.
But it's similar.
How they print out, but yes, the shape.
No purples, no arms.
So it's getting new, completely new cladding on the side, new siding.
Is this done in phases?
We've done over six weeks.
Six weeks, period?
Yeah.
That's our job.
It's pretty fast.
And the restaurant will stay open. So I'll do the outside, I'll do the drive-thru, and then we'll do the restrooms one at a time. It's a pretty big problem now, doing it for about three years.
And this concept is not unique, they've done it, they've done it other places as well, but the idea of a side-by-side drive-thru versus a long drive-thru, making the old building look, give it a new.
Just put one into Winstead, actually, in December. Some people sort of, they merge straight back into one, so it's a pretty sophisticated system, canvas, it tells you all it's coming.
How does nice is this one?
No, well, what could be as nice as this thing?
All right, any other questions? All right, so any discussion? So I'd be looking for a motion.
I move approval of the application.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Go get them.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You guys did pretty good here tonight for all those public kids.
Yeah.
So what happens now?
It's the guy who's just starting, so you're fine.
Yeah, I know. Oh, is there a hockey game? Is there a hockey game? Funny how that works.
Did we start the tape?
Yeah, I hope so. I did.
I know you proved the plan.
Yeah, all right, yeah. Thank you very much.
Good luck. Thank you.
All right, this, oh, what other items we have? Village District Project, anybody know anything about that?
Well, I think there's, Hiram has emailed us, there's a hearing for the We Talk project, if that's what that is, yeah.
Wednesday night. And there's a poster he sent around. We saw that, right?
Yeah.
Love the poster. And what's the marketing project?
The marketing project, I'm aware of that, and there's no schedule for the next meeting because the consultant has to set that date. And I don't know what's going on with Hartford.
I don't either.
A little bit of mystery, yeah.
Well, before we adjourn, is July 1st, everybody here or people around?
I think I'm on vacation.
A lot of people are.
Yeah.
It's going to be a challenge, you're here? It's going to be a challenge to get a car ready. You're here?
Yeah.
Well, there's two of you.